Going to reorganize the board, I think it's that this year. I don't want to be chairman.
I'll step up if.
I'd like to be chairman.
I definitely be interested if.
And whatever, whatever the board, the rest of the board wants.
Just a quick question for, so as alternates, do we not vote on the reorganization of the board as well?
Just, yeah. I don't think they did before.
Okay, that's why I'm not, I just, I don't, I don't recall either. I was an alternate before, but.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't think we reorganized.
We didn't. Reorganized in a long time.
Yeah.
Was prepared to make a motion to make. John the chair, but for seniority purposes, but.
I've added enough years.
Fair enough. I think the alternates can absolutely talk about it and, and give your opinion. Yeah. If you want.
Well, I mean, if there's a motion to be made, I think the motion would have to, I mean, especially if you have two people that are willing to step up, John, you'll have to make the motion on.
I can make a motion at the point of mind. That's what I was thought about.
You've made that.
Talk to you guys.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I've got to step down anyways.
And I know that it's just another point that you might want to make a vice chair when somebody's not available. I know that we did it with the selectmen and had never had done it before.
Be great.
But a lot of the boards are doing that a lot. So, I mean.
Tom wanted to be vice chair, then sure.
You had a motion for that.
Make a motion where you point Tom as the vice chair.
Second.
Hi.
And I wasn't here for the last meeting to accept the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for Thursday, May, or sorry, as to that. The meeting is for April eighteenth. As written.
Second, all favor.
Hi.
Bye.
So.
Let's see.
So again, Dylan, maybe we could ask maybe town council or something, how, how this is supposed to work. Should, again, should, should alternates also be voting on meeting minutes because we were here and just it could be.
Yeah.
An issue where.
Well, alternate should have been on the stepped up because I wasn't there.
No, no, understood. But if it was a, a, a point of. As just the one, one voting member and two alternates at a meeting, how can you vote the meeting minutes? We can't vote, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, let me, let me ask.
Who votes at the meeting?
I don't.
It would make it easier.
Can we vote on meeting, you know, how the meeting is run and just not vote on.
Right, like in planning. Yeah, yeah. Let me ask Charis just to get clarification on that.
Or maybe with all the councils we have.
What was that? The regular one right now.
Yeah, I wasn't sure exactly what you're supposed to do with executive session minutes.
So executive session minutes, um, once, so there was nothing that's still continuing with that. So what we would do is just vote the executive session meeting minutes and they just become now.
Okay.
We can, we can post them along with.
Yeah, I, I.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, accept the executive session minutes from April eighteen. As written.
All favor.
Hi.
Bye.
Hey, other chairman.
Yep.
In accordance with MGL chapter forty-eight, section fifteen, the public hearing of the college of April eighteenth, thousand twenty-four, amended town hall. At six P M. For appeal of the building commissioner's decision regarding twenty Bicknell Drive. Petitioner is in the butter who claims commercial activity occurring at residential property. Who's here representing the climate? Figure name.
Do you want to mention we have a.
Legal.
Opinion from town council about the filing twice.
Yeah, so fortunately, we criticized the town council that matter's been heard twice, right?
Heard once. In, um, yeah. It's not.
It was heard once and not appealed. They only asked twenty days. And they didn't do it in twenty days.
He didn't beat the twenty day deadline. So, right, we're not going to hear that. Yes.
So I beg your pardon. I'm the petitioner, so I'm not really following what's, what you said, what you're telling.
So when we first heard the matter.
Yep, back in October.
That's right. And rendered our decision, we had twenty days to appeal that decision.
This is a different decision.
Um, what, what's substantially different about it?
So if I go back to what the board. There was two elements in the findings. Stated that the, there was no corroboration to claim that the owner and his family didn't live there. You do find island no claim or leak. Yes, to, 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 to what we're here for is an appeal of Mr. Erickson's. Further contact in.
Hold on, um, but this is about the building commissioner's decision regarding whether or not there's commercial activity going on.
So, so the activity is different. So we contacted, uh, four of us, myself and three other people contacted Mr. Erickson. They're using the proper mechanism. And he didn't find. Any commercial activity. So we, with my legal right, I've appealed it to this board. But did you do it in twenty days? Complaint, but it's still.
What is the complaint?
So the complaint is that the commercial activity is, so, so last time it was, it was, you know, is there two commercial vehicles over property, the answer is yes. It's the activity that goes on on a daily basis. The activity is highly ramped up and whether or not they resolved it.
Can I pause for just a moment? The, just to get the clarification, because the way that this was stated was, and I wasn't here for the, for the other ones, so just bear with me for a moment. We had, there was, there was the original complaint and then which was given to the, the, the building department or the zoning enforcement officer, right? And then, which was then brought here. Because they, because you didn't agree with, with the decision. Is, am I correct in saying this?
We agreed with Erickson's.
Yeah, yeah.
John's decision.
So I understood.
He's appealing John's decision, but I'm, I'm confused because he had to do it within twenty days on the same address. I feel John's decision, the approach one, we had to hear.
Yep.
You ruled, as you ruled.
Yes.
And then I, myself and Mr. McGann and Mr. Rousseau, we filed another complaint through Mr. Erickson back in March. And Mr. Eric, because of the activity is just tenfold increase. Mr. Erickson, and I don't blame him, he, he can only drive by. He can't see it the way we see it. He issued another, I find no violations. So, so that March, no violation notice to me. Was appealed properly, winding up in getting on this agenda in April. And then I got very sick and I didn't want to make you all sick. So I asked it to be continued to this evening.
I think it, the twenty day.
What did the council say?
Council said, I think I have her, it's right next to you. That's her email. Yeah. If you want to read that. It's just the first page. Yeah.
Taking a look at cases seems pretty clear. Anything else to appeal to the Z B A? And to enforcement by the building of, they cannot again seek enforcement for the same matter. By failing to appeal the decision of the Z B A first time, they waive the right to try and challenge the decision subsequently in time. I think what we're saying is the same.
Yeah. So I think, I think that better for me now. The, the, the issue is that you didn't appeal the first decision. But you didn't, not the decision of this.
Not, not, not.
Not this decision that was made here. You didn't appeal the, the final decision of the Z B A. That's what she's saying there. So council is saying that because you didn't appeal that, you can't come back in and subsequently say the same thing again. You would have had to appeal that to, to the court, past here. It is, is what's being said is you can't, you can't open another complaint. Essentially, by not appealing it, everybody's agreed that that was the decision. So if you, if this, you know, just think about this in a sense of if this wasn't in place, you could constantly just keep coming back in, whether it was right or wrong, or, or whether there was something being done or not. You could just keep coming back in and, and saying it, saying it, and, and putting in complaints, but. Because that, unless there is a major significant change in what the original complaint was, we can't hear it.
Yeah. I'm, I don't see this being significantly different from the first time you were in front of this board. So. I'm, I'm inclined to go with what council says and this, this represents the same matter.
The town council's, uh.
Yeah.
Finding.
Yeah.
I got one right here.
Yeah. I think it's just that first page of, of her email. Okay, I got this one. It's about your stuff.
Dylan, I'm going to come out of that.
Yeah.
I do need to look up what I said.
Yes.
The complaint's different, Jim, and I, I don't want to burden this. It won't take me but a second. It's essentially the same thing and it hasn't been filed. Say that again? We didn't appeal the other one in twenty days, so you really can't hear the same thing on the same address and same.
Basically, the same complaint. Same type of complaint about.
Same type of complaint.
So the second complaint that was put into, into the zoning officer, what, what, where is that complaint? The, the one that you were speaking of now, because I don't, we have that in this, in this grade.
I don't see it.
So in, uh, in the pocket for twenty Bicknell, after the application form. If you leave, there's, there's one page, section five, nature of relief saw it. The page after that is an email dated February third. So I still do not find the activities of twenty Bicknell to be a violation. Of the town amendment zoning by law. I thought I'd replied on her about January twenty-third. As you're aware, you can appeal my decision in accordance with M G L, sincerely, John Erickson.
Is my email to John in that thread, Dylan?
I think not. Whatever you put in the pocket, I just have his, I think, not the, um.
What's the addendum here? The appeal of building inspector's decision petitioner, James Duffy, then, is it from you?
Yes, that's, yeah, that's from the.
That's, that's the October. That's the October. So when you fill out the form of the Z B A.
I know again. You had a.
No, what you're saying is you use the same, uh, the same description from October in the March.
I mean.
Filing.
No, no, it's completely.
I'm seeing John's response.
Yeah, I don't, we're not seeing, we're not seeing Jim's initial complaint or second complaint, I should say.
I mean, John's response seems to indicate that he's, he's treating it as. A continued enforcement of the first enforcement. Decision. Yeah. He's not seeing, it, it seems like he's not treating it as a different matter. That's, that's what I'm seeing on the email back to you, Jim.
Yeah, February third.
Yeah.
I've seen the same thing.
That's right. He's not treating it as separate.
He's treating it as continued, is a continued decision of enforcement.
And I think the attorney sees it the same way.
I'm saying you, you, we, you've, you've, you've believed your ability to.
Now, I mean, again, I'm not a legal counsel, so I, I wouldn't, I can't say for sure.
I don't know. That would be the avenue.
We've already, we've already heard this matter and we've, we've made a decision on it.
There's anything substantially different. Can't intercept the town council. So I'm of the opinion there's an awful lot that's substantially different. That's why I came.
Is it operating a business out of the residence?
So it's, so, so it's a, it's a residence, right? Bicknell Drive is residential rezoned. And in the activity is, it is absolutely a construction yard for these stages of equipment. Where the, the equipment gets worked on, it gets left overnight, it's stored in the garage. It, it, it is absolutely the construction yard, just like a Fonzo would buy one and, and rent one, just like Roger Mancini had one. This is the construction yard for this company, Mateo Landscaping. And to me, it's indisputable, but with the reason why, where I feel a little handcuffed, gentlemen, is that. I know Mr. Erickson inspected the property, but he's trying to catch lightning in a bottle. He, he's got to see it. And when he drives by, and he doesn't have the time to go by all the time. But what we, what we put up with. As people who live on a residential zone area, this is one hundred percent a construction yard, so much so that the business is branded on a window. And I can show you evidence of where he lives, but I know we can't do that. I don't know what to do now.
Sorry to interrupt, but, but this sounds like the first. Appeal that you brought before this board.
So.
So what, so what, what I would.
Activity has increased.
Can you, can you explain please? Where do you live? You live far away from us.
So, so.
They've heard this before.
I think before we even delve into it, I think the matter of the.
Pretty clear. As far as attorney, this matter is closed.
Yeah, that's right.
So this is, this is my opinion. You can, you can take it up with the selectmen at this point. And secondly, you know, look, if you guys are, just stop. That's all I can say. Uh, that's, that's all I would ask. I'm just saying that if, if you are running a business out of there, just stop. That's all. And I'm not.
No, we, we need, we need a minute please, because like, we need a minute. Like, if, if, can we talk right now?
Well, the thing is, we're not, we're not hearing.
So this is from the neighbor. It's like the, 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 his yard, it's back in my yard, stating that we has no, if I can bestest you, it has no activity.
We're not hearing.
Well, before you get sick of this, the problem is, let me explain to you. I got a lot of evidence that we don't run any business there. He wanted.
That's been determined.
Yes.
I know, I appreciate that. We have a line.
Want the, my property as my neighbor told me for his sons.
Okay.
He want.
Stop, 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 stop. The whole meeting. I gotta, I gotta close the hearing.
Okay.
So don't bother us because I'm going to.
Don't bother us again.
Yes. Because this is.
Stop, stop.
No, no. I work for government, so I know the law.
You guys, look, this is not the place for this.
He's buzzing.
He's bothering us. We have a line.
That's not for here.
Do it again.
I get it. All right.
I can take him to the court. He follow me.
We will, we will, we will take you to the court.
He, he live.
All right.
Block away.
All right, I understand.
Thank you.
That's beyond the scope of this meeting.
So this, we all set?
It's.
The client all set?
Thank you.
Are you gonna email me? Are you, I'm gonna receive another letter for this thing?
I can give you a minute, sir.
I'll take him to the court. You shouldn't follow my kids. You shouldn't follow me. You shouldn't follow anybody.
Nobody should.
I feel, I should feel same in my house with nobody watching me and he shouldn't.
Understood.
I don't take, it's hard to follow my kids, okay?
On to the next.
This one is a bad one to version.
In accordance with the M G L chapter forty-eight, section ten, of public hearing. Where variance will be held May sixteenth, amended town hall at six P M. For thirty. Yeah, again, John and Ann Vanderstuth are requesting relief from the two hundred foot of frontage requirement is forty. Eight seven feet and relief from lot width requirements from two hundred feet at the building setback to forty point eight seven. Yeah, things here.
Yep. This.
It's not confirmed near over there because you're refusing yourself from.
I'm refusing myself, yes.
So we need, um. You guys step up.
Yeah.
So all I'm doing here is trying to straighten out my lot lines because my original lot. Was about three acres. Now I bought other land around me back in nineteen eighty-two. And then I built my garage, my other garage, alley on the other lot. And at the time, with a building permit, I asked for variance. And they said, you don't need a variance because you own all the land. Why do you do anything? I just go to those. And now times have changed. If I want to sell anything, everything will be too close to the lot lines. So I'm just trying to, I'm taking about a half an acre. Out of one lot and put on my lot to make the lot conform. There's a cycle setbacks. But my lot's going to get about, cost me half an acre bigger. And the other lot comes out on North Avenue. So the frontage on that lot will be that forty point eighty-seven feet. I'm not building a house or anything like that. Lot one is my house.
And there's no, uh, there's no frontage change.
My frontage will go from, no, no, sorry, uh, from the other lot. No, no, no.
But that's on North Ave.
Yeah. Frontage, I'm going to be gaining frontage.
At, at lot one.
Lot one's going to be gaining about ninety feet of frontage.
Yeah, and lot two's frontage is on North Ave, so it doesn't make.
Not North Ave, not, not Bedro.
Oh, on North Bedro. Oh, but that's, it's on the other side here.
On the other side of the house.
Yeah, of, of, uh. Of Boucher?
Yes.
Yep.
And that was always a.
Yep.
Road in.
So, so we're just, we're taking.
You're taking about a half an acre out of this one lot, putting it in this lot.
And then we'll leave, um. I'm trying.
It's going to leave eleven point nine, nineteen.
Eleven, about eleven point one nine acres.
Yep.
But lot two.
Yeah.
Lot two will be eleven acres.
He's taking from lot two, adding to lot one.
Right. But I'm just wondering, where's, you, North Ave was mentioned.
Yeah, no, North Ave.
Okay.
You may not.
I was confused.
This is North Bedro.
Okay, I could see that. So there will be no frontage for lot two.
Yes, there is.
Just this little silver.
That forty point eight seven feet for driveway.
Got it.
Or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's ninety feet was frontage on that lot. On the other side.
Got it.
But I'm not using that because now my garage is on that lot. My driveway is on that lot.
I'm understanding now. And your intention is. For, for lot one is to.
My lot one, the boundary lines were too close to the garage.
Yeah.
When I built the garage, so I have to get a variance. If I should die and my daughter or somebody tries to sell out, you can't do anything with it because of variance.
So this, this is, you don't have any plans as of right now?
No, I'm just trying to.
Just to fix the lot.
I'm trying to fix this lot so that there's no problem if I should die or, we're all going to die someday. I just don't want to end up with a. Big nightmare.
Lot number two would be somewhat restricted by the nature of the wetland too.
Lot number two, yes, a lot of wetland. There's restricted there. I'm just giving the frontage at forty feet.
Got it.
That's it. There's a lot of wetlands. But that's a total. Watch the chat, the audience.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on that?
Good evening. Gentleman Henry Lane here. I'm chairing on behalf of Irene Ferrer, the sub-buttered.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm, I guess, first thing I have is a question. Obviously, he doesn't need a variance to enlarge his current lot. So I guess the question is, why are we doing this?
Because they told me I need a variance for this here to keep this, the frontage for this lot because I don't want a land lot, that land. I own this right away, right away anyways.
Well. I think somebody's getting bad advice. Clearly, you don't need a variance to do that. And it appears the only reason for getting a variance is to, is to make lot two a legal lot. And you don't need to do that. If you're not planning on developing it, you can just mark it as not a buildable lot and you can do what you want with property lines. So.
Someday.
I, well.
Go ahead.
Let me finish. Uh, if a variance is to be granted simply to allow him to alter the lot lines, then I would request that, uh, the variance specifically provide that lot two cannot be further developed. Because otherwise, he is basically saying he's creating a buildable lot and just telling you he doesn't have any current plans. But it doesn't need to be a lot in order to alter the lot lines. So this is basically, in my view, this aversive way to suggest to you. That, but to, to not suggest to you the honest truth, which is he's trying to create a buildable lot and telling you he's only altering the lot lines. So if he's not willing to accept a condition that lot two will not be developed, then I have a lot more to say. So that's question number one.
But it's a buildable lot now.
What's that?
It's, it's a buildable lot now.
Buildable lot today.
It is not a buildable.
Yes. I can get a variance. I could build a house here today. It's a separate deed.
It is not a buildable lot.
I had a building permit for it once already.
You may well have. It is not a buildable lot today. It does not have the front, frontage required by the.
It's, it's a, it's a pre-existing non.
Pre-existing non-conforming lot.
It is not.
Based on what?
Mr. Panislo's owns both lots.
Yep.
Now, that means, we've had the discussion just a couple of months ago, you just lost the case in court that says if you have land, you got to use it. Okay, he can't, this is not a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It's a non-conforming lot. It's merged with the existing lot. He's got one lot. That combines all the land and it's a conforming lot, but he can't carve off the eleven acres in the back without two hundred feet of frontage.
Separate by law.
It's a separate deed.
Doesn't matter. No, it actually, it isn't a separate deed. It's the same deed. It doesn't matter if it's a separate deed or not.
Separate lot, bought it a separate time.
Doesn't matter. You own.
I bought this lot so I wouldn't have houses behind me.
Did you just, did you read the decision in Benoit?
No.
Well, read it.
We weren't, I wasn't offered it.
They didn't provide you with a copy of the decision in Benoit? Perhaps you can ask the assistant planner to provide you with a copy.
Well, I'm, regardless, I'm talking.
The council.
You know, we just had the discussion four, five months ago. You own both lots. They have merged. That is not a separate lot. And.
But no, it was the difference. They were all non-conforming lots. These are two conforming, I have a conforming lot.
And a non-conforming lot.
And a non-conforming.
Right. And you still have a conforming lot and a non-conforming lot. And we have no problem with that as long as you don't try to build on it because it's a non-conforming lot.
Well, I don't want to say ever because I don't want to happen.
If there remains non-conforming, you would need.
That law of mergers, right?
Yep.
Isn't it that they merge for the purposes of performance?
Of what?
Isn't it that, that the lots would only merge if you're trying to create a conforming condition on a non-conforming lot?
Right.
So if you have two separate lots with two hundred feet of frontage that are conforming, they don't essentially merge. For zoning, they only merge for zoning purposes if there's a non-conforming condition on the other lot.
Right.
So in this case, he has two lots that he can't, he already has one conforming lot, right?
He does.
So he has.
And one non-conforming lot.
Non-conforming, but pre-existing non-conforming.
No, no.
So.
It is not a pre-existing.
Yes, it is.
No.
What makes it non, what, what makes it non-pre-existing?
He owns both of them. They merged.
But it, so, so how does the merger happen? Like this magical thing happened? I got to understand, is there paperwork involved? Does the town notify you?
Once we don't.
Once you acquire both parcels, they merge for zoning purposes.
Immediately or after two years?
No, immediately.
Oh, because there's all, there's a lot of misinformation thrown around about lot mergers.
Well, we've granted many.
The, the original lot, lot one was conforming, correct?
Apparently, I haven't researched people, but I'll accept the, the current.
Yes, it was.
Stand, is that if you have a non-conforming lot and also another non-conforming lot, they merge for the purposes, not by deed. But for the purposes of zoning to make the other conforming, correct?
That's one thing that happens. That's one thing. It's not the only thing that happens, but. That's one thing that happens. That's one thing. It's not the only thing that happens, but.
If you have the same.
If you have a conforming lot and a non-conforming lot, and you bring him into common ownership, you have one conforming lot. The non-conforming lot loses its character as a pre-existing non-conforming lot once it comes into common ownership. Once it comes into common ownership, you can no longer, uh, use it as a non-conforming lot because it's now conforming. The lot, for zoning purposes, the lot lines disappear. Okay, you now have one big chunk of land which conforms. You can no, you cannot go back and undo that once you bring it into common ownership.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So you're, what you're putting forward here is the idea that he's making lot two conforming from being a non-conforming, as you consider it a non-conforming lot. But then you're also saying that both pieces together become conforming.
No, I'm not saying.
This was not a non-conforming lot anyways.
Saying he now has one conforming lot, and he's trying to, by a variance, trying to create a second lot.
Because.
But you're, by your own, but, but what you're saying is that for zoning purposes, they're all considered one lot regardless. That's what you're telling us.
Zoning purposes, it's now considered one lot. On the other hand, if you give him a variance to create a second lot, now he has two buildable lots. But only because he's got a variance.
Can I give the assessor's card?
So he's basically trying to create a second lot.
I also have the deed up, which is why it's called lot two on the plan.
If I had lot two.
Okay, so let's, let's stop there for a second. So. Say that is what he's trying to do. We've, we, we grant these, we, we've granted them quite often. Why, why wouldn't we even grant it for that reason if that was the reason?
Well, you can start with the proposition that the statute's very clear that you need three things in order to grant a variance. One is you have to have a hardship. Mr. Vanesloos has no hardship. Okay, he's on this land in the family. He's been in the families for forty years. There's no hardship. He lives on it. He's got a garage. He's got a swimming pool. Everything he could possibly need for a single-family residence.
Before we move from there.
Yeah.
What's considered a hardship? Like what, like where's the list of things that are considered hardship? Who, who makes the determination of what the hardship is?
There's dozens of cases, okay? It's almost impossible to prove a hardship, okay? It's gotta be something like you would have, a, a lot that has, is entirely less. Except, if you want to corner, case you can, you can bury a side lot setback because you can't build a house anywhere but on that little corner of a lot. Okay, that's a hardship. Or for instance, uh, well, that's, that's probably one of the few examples that actually works, okay? It could conceivably have a shape factor, okay? You have a lot that's, you know, comes in, it's a triangle. I have, there's a case where that happens. It's a triangle. Okay, and because of, of the way the side lot setbacks, as you go back into triangles, you can't quite fit the building in. Because the shape of the lot narrows at the rear of the lot.
Sure.
And the rear corner doesn't quite meet the setback. You can grant a variance because it's a hardship that prevents you from building on that lot, if, if that's all you have. And you've no way to bring it into compliance, you can grant a variance because there's something about the shape of the lot that creates the hardship.
I get what you're saying.
Okay, those are the kinds of things. Uh, if you have a wetland, for instance, now, there's a lot of wetland on this, but it doesn't prevent you from building on it. But if you have a lot that has wetlands, you know, figure it in a way that prevents you from meeting setback requirement, but you might be allowed. Those are the kind of hardships that prevent you from building on an otherwise buildable lot, okay? Frankly, if you look at the cases, probably ninety-five percent of variances that are granted don't meet the statutory requirement narrow or not. Because statutory requirements are so narrowed, and the cases are very, that, that they're supposed to be sparingly granted in extraordinary circumstances. There's nothing extreme or extraordinary in this case. Mr. Vanesloos would like to get a buildable lot, which is, you know, worth a couple hundred thousand dollars. I don't begrudge him that.
It's not worth that.
No. Well, a hundred and fifty thousand.
Still a little high.
You find me, you find me a lot invented for less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and I'll buy it.
Okay.
Okay.
Before I get there.
You can find a buildable lot, um, and then for that kind of price, you'll have people lined up at the door, okay?
Suppose if I wanted, I don't.
The fact that Mr. Vanesloos would like to make some money, you know, is good for him.
Well, that, these, these are pretty tall accusations that you're making that that's the only reason he's doing this. Like, you know this for sure? You got some paperwork on that?
What, why else is he here?
To get, to, to, to fix his lot lines, and somebody told him he needed a variance, and he thought he's had a second lot there this whole time.
He doesn't, he doesn't need.
When did the merger law go into effect?
Zoning went into effect.
Same, which was when?
Before you or I were born.
The seventies, right?
Well, I don't know when Menon adopted zoning, but. Menon's early, late seventies.
Yep. So, so when did you buy this land?
Eighty-two, eighty-one, early eighties. I, I don't.
So then, I mean, the, the merger, I, I was looking to see if there was a, you know, a grandfather clause there, but obviously not. Um, yeah, I, I don't know personally. Um, I, I have to take your, uh, uh, opinion on the matter. Um, you seem to be well-versed in it. Uh, however, I, I know that we've, that we do grant these, um.
I, I don't disagree that you have, you have granted them, but.
Many.
I would like to remind you, and as I say, we've had this conversation several times over the last couple of years. Menon's voters adopted zoning for a reason, okay? And there are maybe extraordinary circumstances where a small variance is warranted, but the idea of just granting variances, you know, willy-nilly because people ask, is not what the law requires.
I bought this land because.
I, I think.
Somebody was gonna build a house there.
I think I have the floor. So the first criteria you asked about was hardship. So I said, I don't see a hardship, okay? And the hardship not only has to be a hardship, it has to relate to one of the three criteria. The soil conditions, the shape, or the topography. Now, there's nothing on this that suggests that any of those factor in. Now, there are wetlands. There may be soil conditions, but that's not what he's asking for a variance about. He's asking a variance for frontage. None of those criteria relate to the frontage. His problem is, he doesn't have the frontage that the zoning bylaw in Menon requires. That's all. It's a lack of frontage. It's not a hardship related to soil, shape, or topography.
What are the other items? You said there was three criteria.
It's also, yeah, it also has to be consistent with the meaning and intent of the zoning bylaw and not derogate from the neighborhood, okay? Clearly, this, this runs directly contrary to the bylaw. Bylaw says you need two hundred feet of frontage at the street and at the, at the setback line, at the building setback line. He's got twenty percent of what's required. It doesn't come close. You know, if he had a hundred and ninety-five feet, I'd say, well, okay, that's, you know, that's kind of the minimum situation where a variance may be warranted. But, but an eighty percent reduction in the requirement is not consistent with the voters decided they wanted for, for density and building in this town. And as I say, the statutory annual bylaw criteria are very clear, you know? You are not authorized to grant variances under these circumstances. And I'm not going to suggest that you haven't in the past, but I'm suggesting that because you've made mistakes in the past, doesn't mean you have to continue to make them. Let's just call it spade a spade. The bylaws is two hundred feet, make it two hundred feet. And if you get that one ninety-five foot or a one ninety-seven foot variance requirement, then you can say, well, we're almost there, and a little grace may be warranted. But an eighty percent reduction in what the town meeting said is required, that's not reasonable, especially in a situation like this where there's no rational basis for granting a variances in that condition. Not even close.
It's third.
What's that?
What's the third? You said there was three.
I think I, I listed all three. The hardship related to the shape, derogation, uh, neighborhood, and, and consistent with the bylaws.
So you're saying I could get a variant to build a house here if I wanted to? We do it all the time.
And I just gave you a speech telling you why you should not.
Fork chop lot, so you have backland you can't use ever. I'm not that planning on doing it.
Look, do what every other town does that wants to do this passive fork chop bylaw. Oxbridge has one, Douglas has one, uh, Northbridge has one, Sutton has one. Menon, for whatever reason, has decided not to adopt this, uh, a fork chop bylaw. Well, that's great. If you adopt one, then you can come in and get a special permit and do it the legal way. But that's the way you do it. That's the way every other town has done it. And if Menon wants to give you building permits on forty, uh, on forty feet of frontage, adopt a fork chop bylaw and make it legal. But don't subvert the bylaw by simply willy-nilly granting out variances with, you know, with an eighty percent reduction in the required frontage. Everybody else in town has to come, well, I shouldn't say everybody else.
I know we've done somewhere fifteen.
But, but ninety-five percent of the people in town have to build on, on two hundred feet of frontage because that's what the bylaw requires. So they don't come in and ask for variances. You know, and you have the same right. If you want to build a subdivision, you can do that. You can comply with if you want to. You just don't want to. And, you know, I, as I say, I don't begrudge you, you know, if you can get, if you can get a free lot, you know.
Well, I don't.
I don't call it free.
I think that's, if not for.
And he bought it as, he bought it as a separate lot.
He bought it for a dollar.
No, I do.
I honestly, what he, what he paid for.
I paid a dollar for it.
Can.
I wish I did.
So if not for Mr. Vanesloos buying it under the same name, deed, we wouldn't be having this discussion. Is that, I understand?
I, I, you know, I have to go back and look at the whole title of history. This has been, this has been in the family.
For the common ownership in nineteen eighty-two.
It was in common ownership before then. It's been in common ownership since beginning of time.
No. Well, if that's the case, then it's before zoning, it's, then it's.
Yeah.
Grandfather.
This has been divided up so many times. Common ownership with all of North Bedro there, that whole area is divided.
My parents bought the lot next to him. They, and they also have a non-buildable lot back of their land.
Yeah.
It was, it was passed prior to ninety-five. They wanted to put that in there, and it didn't happen then. And my dad's wishes, you know, John, was they didn't want something built between us.
Was it ninety-five? No, I never cried in ninety-five.
I could have a date.
I add the land is in sixty-one B.
What's that?
The land in the back is under sixty-one B. It's, it's.
Sixty-one B.
It's eight oh one hiking trails, trails or paths. It's not listed as residential.
It's recreational.
So it's not listed as residential.
What, lot two?
It's that social database, just to.
Lot two, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
So the lot in question, so you can't even build a house on it?
So.
Oh, because I want to.
Lot one is, lot one is single-family, one oh one, and the second lot, eight oh one hiking.
So it, it's, in order to make it buildable, there's a significant process.
You'd have to go to town.
A rollback, this is among other things, so.
So we're making a, a, a lot more conforming.
I'm taking this quarter acre, about a half an acre, out of sixty-one B and putting on tax rules.
But the rest of the lot is still sixty-one B.
Yes, yeah.
You can't build a house on it.
And I talked to Gene about that.
And as I said, I have no problem. If you make a condition of the variance at the house, that the lot not be developed, we're fine with it.
Isn't that sixty-one, it's already sixty-one B. That condition already exists.
That's a matter of requesting a release. It takes about five minutes.
You know, that's a position to restrict his ability. It's strictly our decision to grant.
Sixty-one B, you know?
Then why do you, why does he need a variance?
Because they told me I do.
Who told you? Nobody, nobody knows what you're doing, told you that, because legally you don't need a variance to alter the lot lines.
Choice to seek it.
What's that?
It, it's his choice to seek this variance.
Well, right. But he's gonna have, he's gonna meet the criteria for a variance, and I'm telling you, he's asking for a variance to create a buildable lot because there's no other reason to do it.
I, I.
He hasn't presented that.
So you, I'm, hold on, hold on one second now. So you're saying that for the purposes of zoning, these are considered one lot?
Yes.
Even though one is in chapter land and one is not?
Yeah, that makes no difference.
How, how does that not make it?
It happens all the time. If you have, you know, if you have a farm, you know, they carve out the house, even though it's one piece of land, the house and, and the lot around it is considered a, a house. All the rest of the land.
Their lots with completely different zoning, completely different classes of land.
Look, classification of land does not go by lot lines. It goes by the actual use of the land. So if you have fifty acres of land and you have, you know, you, you till fifty, twenty-five acres, and you don't build it, uh, till the other twenty-five, they will classify twenty-five acres of that land as chapter land and leave the rest as regular taxation. It's not a question of lot lines. Taxation is based on the use of the land, okay? It has nothing to do with zoning. It's totally irrelevant. So it's not even worth discussing. This is in a residential zone. The entire piece here is in a residential zone. The fact that it's taxed in two different classifications makes no difference with respect to the use, the, uh, the zoning of the land.
So I find it appropriate that you're trying to seek a variance to create a more conforming lot, uh, with respect to the property lines, you know, they should hear our system.
Yeah, because my garage and barn is on the other lot.
I see no issue with that. I see that the rear lot is restricted by nature and, and its ability to be developed.
Yeah. Just, so what's the problem with putting in the, uh, our, meeting our request and putting in that it can't be developed?
What's that?
It's our discretion not to seek that.
Well, then explain to me what, what the criteria are for a variance and why you're granting it.
I, we're granting a variance based on the lot line restrictions on the front of the property in relation to the sideline of the house. And we're creating a more conforming condition, which is essentially the intent of the merger doctrine.
Is this, is this current lot not conforming?
My, current lot is conforming.
Yeah, so.
But, but the building is on, is over what the lot line is considered with the town.
He, he owns the land. He can move that lot line anywhere he wants. He doesn't need your permission to move his lot line. Just draw the line. He doesn't need your permission. What, keep pushing, overlooking the fact that he's eliminating ninety feet, ninety feet of frontage from the non-conforming portion.
But it doesn't exist in your eyes. So it doesn't matter. It doesn't exist in what you're saying.
If, if he's talking about his existing conforming lot, because lot one is a conforming lot as it currently exists.
Yeah.
Okay, so he's saying he's making it more not, he more conforming? No, he's not making it more conforming. It's already conforming. All he's doing is making the non-conforming portion less conforming by eliminating nine, ninety feet of frontage. Because the non-conforming, you know, lot now has a hundred and thirty feet of frontage, and he's reducing it to forty.
What is the, what is your, what does lot one currently have for frontage? Uh, but if you're adding ninety feet.
I feel like we've, hold on, losted this conversation.
We'll be up there.
And I, I just requested we move to hear from the audience.
Uh, any additional comments from the audience?
I'll, I'll state something.
Okay.
Okay. My parents have lived next to us, John Dinsley's, since the very beginning of the days. My father has recently just passed away, and I have inherited this land, this property that was the Vanesloos'. My mother is back home grieving and concerned that something is different and happening next door.
I can guarantee that.
There was a time before, excuse me, there was a time before when there was going to be a request to have something developed. So there is forty foot, forty point eight seven feet of frontage between forty-two and forty, North Bridge Road. And then there is thirty-eight, which is conforming frontage. There was that thirty-six. Between thirty-six and thirty-four is a small ten-foot portion, strip of land, that also goes back to number forty. So thirty-six and thirty-eight are land lots off North Bridge Street. And the lot that is lot two, which is number forty, goes behind that and has the large lanes. So you've got a forty point eight seven foot of land or a ten-foot parcel. And John's conforming lot is thirty-eight, thirty-eight and forty combined. Forty is technically now appropriated for, 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 um, non-usage, correct? That's what the.
It's under forty B, yeah.
Correct. So changing that lot line now, after he's lived there for forty-five years next to my parents, is because that he's wanting to access land he bought that he knew he couldn't build on in eighty-two. My parents also bought a parcel of land that they cannot build on behind forty-two. It's forty-two point two. That's a landlot piece of land that can never be built in a soon zone. So the only reason for a variance and a change of lot lines is to access this parcel for no hardship is, is there. And the only thing would be that then that would be a buildable lot that, that would have to be changed, which is easily done. So granting a variance on something that was standing there since nineteen eighty-one in eighty-two right now is a little disheartening to come home and fund.
So.
On an estate that just inherited.
So the access is. So the access is already there. He's not asking for the access. That forty feet is already there. He doesn't have a buildable lot. Hold on, wait, 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 hold, hold on. He doesn't have a buildable lot. And even if, even if you took it out of sixty-one B. You cannot build back there. There is way too much wetland. You're, you don't have enough upland. It's been. It, well, it's still considered wetland. I've had it all flagged.
If, if it's not buildable, just put in the restriction we've asked for. That's all we're, we're done. Put in a restriction that it's not going to be built on and we're out of here.
So you're okay. So you're okay with, with doing this illegally by your words? As long as we do it illegally your way? That's exactly what you just said.
If you put a restriction on it, make it clear that it's not going to be built upon, it's perfectly legal. You don't have to have frontage for land that you're not building on. You only need frontage if you're going to build on it. So if you put a restriction saying it's not buildable. Highly legal.
It's already not buildable.
It's already.
Then why, why can't you put it in the, in the document? Then we can sleep it.
Because it's already not buildable.
It is buildable. Why is it not?
Yes, because it's in sixty-one B.
It's really, we've heard this argument.
Yeah, of course.
Over and over again, and, and I think we should, we should move on to see if anybody else has anything separate.
I want to.
I'm good.
I, I would like to point out that the forty-foot strip he's planning on using is also subject to an easement for a neighbor.
Yes.
It's a right of, yeah, so it's an asset.
Right away.
It's a right of way for a neighbor. So now you're using your neighbor's right of way as frontage for this lot.
Which is right.
Which is ridiculous. What's that?
It's his right.
My, I'm paying taxes on this right of way.
You, you, now you've created a.
Right, I ran.
Because you're going to have two people using.
Hang, hang on, hang on, sorry. It's only, it's, it's, it's the, the illegalities of this is okay if we do it his way.
No. You're making it legal by doing it my.
I think. No.
Why you misrepresent what I said. If you put the restriction in, the process into.
Six hundred.
Why do you keep saying that? Is it absolutely?
You can not build on a sixty-one B lot.
Why won't you put the restriction in?
Because it's, because it's already not buildable.
Well, then what, 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 what hurt, what is hurting?
What, what, what does it need to be there? If it's already, it's, it's this, we're saying the same thing around and around.
You can take it out of fifty, sixty-one B in five minutes. Okay, five minutes to take it out of fifty, uh, sixty-one B, then it's buildable.
It's a little bit long. You have to petition the board of selectmen.
I mean, can we move on to a decision on this?
So put in the restriction, you, you made the process legal and we're happy. And it doesn't change anything. It's already not buildable.
But I.
He's a priority.
Reason I'm doing this, you never asked me, but I'm going to tell you. Doing this because of the bondy lines.
Right.
I don't want to build a house here. I don't want to build a barn. I don't want to build anything.
Oh, we go.
I bought the land because I don't, didn't want houses back there back in nineteen.
Make a motion.
Yeah, all right.
And, um.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the variance as requested.
Second.
On favor?
All right.
I still don't want to build a house. And I'm going to build. But I don't know what's going to happen forty years down the road. So all gone. That's, that, just as a matter of information, you are going to delineate in your decision what the hardship was here, right?
Yes.
We, so when we file our appeal, it has a record.
Yep. Right. Dylan, will you?
The fact, despite the fact that there was no evidence of a hardship here, you're going to, you're going to spell out and articulate the hardship.
I, I, I am saying that the hardship is.
I, hold on.
Yeah.
It's a non-buildable lot. It is, is so by your definition, as it, right now it sits, it's non-buildable in sixty-one B. If he tries to pull it out of sixty-one B, then you have an argument. Right now it's a non-buildable lot. Non-buildable. You can't build on it. We've granted it based on the fact that it's a non-buildable lot.
It's a non-buildable lot that the minute you voted, you made it buildable.
Well, it's not. It's not buildable. It's sixty-one B. You can't build on it.
You, you don't, you have no idea how sixty-one B works, obviously. Sixty-one B does not prevent you from building.
Okay.
It requires you to go to the selectmen to get a release. That's nothing.
So right now it's non-buildable. Without that release.
So you can build on it anyway.
Oh.
But, but that's really not the issue here. If you, if we all agree, as Mr. Van Der Suist says, he's not planning on building.
I don't.
I think we, we, we've made a decision and we've, we've determined that we will put in. The decision, what are, are reasons for proving the variance.
Specify as not.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
As long as it says that, I'm happy.
We're going to specify our reasons.
Sure, use myself.
Okay. Um, in, um.
John, are you turning back on or do you want to step up?
Doesn't.
Oh, go ahead.
So in accordance with MGL, chapter forty-eight, section ten, the mending zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, amended town hall. Um, at six P M. for one oh two North Ave. The petitioner is requesting a variance from the minimum frontage requirement. From two hundred feet to fifty-one point nine feet to allow for the division of the property into four single-family building lots.
Evening.
Oh wait, yes, I'm here. Um. Thank you, so. You've let what this petitioner speak?
Uh, so, uh, good evening. My name is John Sorm, uh, councillor of the, uh, the owner of the property. I believe seeing. Handouts. Given to you that are a little bit smaller and easier to manage. Big folded ones. Mister Clark is looking to subdivide his property. Basically, he has a large piece of property with very small area frontage. Uh, and his, his hardship is primarily financial. He wants. If he wants to. Develop, self-develop to give his children or grandchildren opportunity to have a house lot. It's very expensive to live in Menden. Uh, and so he is here looking, uh, to make a presentation and answer any questions that he has. The gentleman to my right, who, he'll identify himself.
Michael Dean from D and L Design Group.
And, uh, he'll walk you through exactly what we're trying to do and, and then hopefully we can answer any questions and any questions, uh, from the public.
Thank you. Yeah, representing. The Clarks who live on the parcel of land referred to as one oh two North Ave. Have here is the plan showing the overall forty-one acres shown here in the. Orange, North Ave is located here. The parcel is located about midway between. Misco Hill Road. And North Bridge Street. On the west side, there's north here, on the west side of. So what we have here is a, a layout showing a conventional subdivision for the forty-one acres. Shown is. Slightly over fifteen hundred foot conventional subdivision road shown here in brown. Small with this. Roadway shown here for fifteen hundred feet. And this particular layout shows lot one, two, three, four, through eight. So eight lots shown on a conventional subdivision. That's really not that aggressive. They probably could be up more, more like ten, ten lots of this or something. Lots, existing houses shown here. Which is currently accessed through an existing access drive that can go off in your down. Or here. Access and services to the house. Okay, so that's, that's the layout there. You can see. Wetlands. Like trees, basically. From south and electric convention. What's in front of those. Board. Seamen. The Z B A petition. This is the actual variance program. Okay?
We're not asked great, though. Excuse me. First of all, it's not what you're asking for.
No, that's just to show the potential development.
Yeah.
That shows a potential development of the forty-one acre parcel.
And that's with the cul-de-sac. That's not if he, uh, gains additional access from someone such as Ford's purpose.
Right, which is land open further northwest. So there's a lot of things that could potentially take place and lots really are interested. So what they petition to the. Zoning board is to seek. All lots with reduced, reduced frontages along North Ave. What this plan shows is lot one through four. Uh, one, two is a large parcel. Became the existing house. A three, a lot four, a short game. So these lots here range from the smallest one is like three acres. And the largest one, which the existing house would. Be gained on. Is twenty. Twenty-seven acres. So obviously with this, oh, and then. They'd be keeping the access drive exactly where it is. So in the wetland, you know. Bypassing the wetland, really no alteration of the wetlands in this way. And then this would be laid out with a thirty-foot access. That would be, you know, that would be cut out around the existing access drive. It's also important to note, note that the subdivision road. Would actually require about forty-seven hundred square feet of wetland alterations.
Right.
This, this. You know, without getting into the full design, you let. Zero to about eight hundred feet, square feet of wetland. Depending on any modifications to the access. So with this scenario, there's less disturbance, the, the overall disturbance of a conventional subdivision that's shown there is probably. Right around ten acres of disturbance of the overall parcel. This is. Four acres of disturbance, so quite a bit less. So what this does is, you know, you don't have the infrastructure, you don't have the stormwater detention basins that would be required with the conventional subdivision. Less disturbance. Seeking those, the way this, the variance is by the frontage in the.
It effectively locks up the ability, uh, eliminates the ability to do a subdivision because of the way he designed it. And additionally, um, it has much less impact potential on, on the school district. With the conflation of, uh, how many kids are in a bin with, on average, moving to town. So, uh, it eliminates a lot of that. It promotes maintaining the open. The open land, that is obviously a very large lot there. Uh, so that will be our request. There is no sight distance issues on the road. It's pretty much a straightaway. Um, it's a wide road and so there's no public safety concerns or issues. Yeah, the answer on the questions.
Do you have any questions from the board?
Yeah, so the, the, I mean, one other benefit of these that you just didn't know was that we also don't have to accept the road at the end and maintain another road in town. It's maintained by the homeowners and it's a shared driveway, not a road.
Very good.
Any, any other questions from the board?
Three additional houses.
Yep.
Correct, three additional. I'm going to move to the audience. Do you have any questions from the audience? Sir? Get your name and your address.
Back, yeah. I bought the house and I spoke to this board. I was told that there was a non-buildable out there and the guy just lost. Ten thousand, two thousand dollars not being able to sell the land. That property because it was unbuildable. He was priced a number of times. How can it be buildable now? And I do agree with the last guy about the hardship. I don't understand. The frontage is a frontage. We bought the house. In non-buildable land. I, I was granted a variance myself. For two feet. To my left side to pull the garage. We're not looking for a hundred and sixty. We're not looking to have cars going up and down a driveway that has lights in my house. We got that now. Agree to that. I'm not even the closest, but lot one. It's in my backyard.
So the only thing I can say that. This. I, I don't know if hardships work both ways, but.
I know. I already did my homework on it. And what that other guy said, in my opinion. Is legit.
No, no, I, I'm not, and I'm not.
It's a different hardship.
I'm not denying that. I'm not.
It's a hardship to make money, sir.
I'm not denying that, but you can.
Money the previous owner.
Well, both, making money also isn't a, isn't, isn't something that's, that's illegal.
It's not a restriction.
But hang on, hang on. Let me get to one of my points as well. So if we, if we build, i- if they go in and, and go decide plan review and build eight houses back here, right, which is very likely to be done, right? Which.
But they already tried, wasn't it?
Oh, I don't, I don't. I don't know. All, all I'm saying is that if you go and put eight houses in here, right, now it's eight, it's eight houses instead of four. These types of, of. Of, 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 buil- building this way. And this is my only, only my opinion. I, I live on one. Because that was another eight lot subdivision that was supposed to go there, that is now just four houses and actually is only. Two. Well, the third one was already there. So. Um, you know, two. These are better for the town than going to that subdivision, ending up with eight houses behind your house.
But what about the wetland?
Ending up. Well, you can, you, they have the wetlands delineated and you work through that. You can recreate, you can, this isn't, this isn't conservation. So I, I don't, I. I, I don't know the, the ins and outs of that property with that, but when it comes down to four. And adding essentially three, uh, of, of the one that's already there is one of the four. And. Again, the town not having to then maintain a road afterwards. Is much better with larger lots. Houses that are set back further. Uh, maybe I'm a little biased because I see the benefit of it where I live. Um. But these are better for the town. Uh, in every respect. Pressure on the schools.
What about the neighbors?
But if he puts a road in there, you're going to have two houses behind it.
We already got a road.
What are you talking about?
The road goes right by my yard.
Sorry, say it again?
The road goes right by our houses.
Right, that's, but that's a driveway now.
Yeah, but it's going to be a roadway, right?
What's that?
It's going to turn into a road, right?
No.
The highway is going to stay a driveway. They're going to have a separate entrance.
No, no, this is, this, this, it becomes a shared driveway.
I know, I'm familiar with.
For the houses, right? So that stays the same, but they maintain it. It's not, it's not giving up, the, the town doesn't take it. Doesn't, doesn't maintain that, that driveway.
I say all I got to say.
What's that?
I say all I got to say. I don't believe that the variance is legit. Because it does need a hardship and there's a few other things that go along with it, just like the past zones.
Okay.
I don't want it there and if I was told before the houses are going to be way out and not affect anybody, but now there's one in my backyard.
Okay.
I don't like it. That's all. Very simple, you know?
Thank you.
My name's Brian. Sigla. I live next door, one oh six North Ave. Um, my wife Tracy's back there as well. So we've lived there for, uh, twenty-three years. Um. We own the property. Actually. But that whole side of that block. Um. I understand that there are other towns that have changed their zoning to allow for what they're trying to do here. I think it's pretty astute to. Lay this in front of you first. To say that this is the better alternative. Um. You know, that being said, under the current statutory, uh, structure that we have. There is no hardship here. Just because you can't, I mean, this is built for. Development of a single-family residence. They have a single-family residence here. Just because you can't make. Another million dollars on the property by subdividing it further, doesn't create the financial hardship that would. That would allow your variant, uh, that allow the, allow variance to withstand an appeal. Not only that, um, but I mean, you heard a pretty good explanation of the, uh. The variance law, um, by attorney Lane, and he's right, um, especially here, the, um. The frontage conditions isn't, it's not covered by soil condition. It's not covered by, um, the shape of the land and not, and it's not covered by the topography of the land. Um. That being said, um. I mean, I don't agree with this going in, especially I know, I believe, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, but. Um. Mister Clark's predecessor.[1746.98] Um, it, Mr. Clark's predecessor, I know, wanted to develop this and go through. The trust land on this side to create a road and then go back and used basically instead of forty acres, it would be seventy acres. If this board decides, um, that the variance should be allowed, um. You know, where this house sits, where it's going to sit is gonna be basically right on top of. You know, my yard. One oh six.
No, no, which laws, uh, which house law, thank you.
So if you were to allow this, uh, you know. I think attorney Lane had asked for a condition, the condition I would look for if you were to grant this variance. And I'm assuming, I don't know what the vegetation of, over here would be, but I know here it's thick, there's a lot of trees, there's a lot of vegetation, a lot of privacy. My, my concern is really with the privacy part of this, if it is, like I said, if you decide to grant this variance. But if you hear it's a condition that I, I would want, with at least, I don't know how long, so eighty, thirty or forty feet of arborvitae's or some sort of other. Natural boundary that would provide the same sort of privacy and. I guess, I think that's why we live our, live our, already, as it is, this north of, it's like a speedway. Um, I'd rather not be surrounded by a speedway in front and also have excess traffic than it is. And that's, that's really all I have to say.
We, we, um, I've had an opportunity to speak to, to the gentleman, who's also a talented attorney from. And we certainly appreciate his privacy request and we, uh, I've spoken with the, the owner. And the engineer that if there's some way to tweak that house position a little bit, we're not opposed to that. And if we can't, then we certainly would put up, uh, a vegetation barrier, uh, that, uh, meets his requirements with it. I think arborvitae's is a good way to go because it grows fast, it's thick and it grows very tall. Uh, but, uh, if, if, uh, if, uh, Mr. Consigli decided he wanted some other kind of bushes, we. We don't have any problem with the condition in there that there'll be some type of natural barrier, uh, put there, he, you know. Our provides probably is the one that makes the most sense, that's the one I've done before this board in other cases, but. So I had to pick some other type of.
It would be arborvitae's and I would want it to be a condition, it has nothing to do with like switching around the house a foot and saying I could get away with it that way. No, it has to be the arborvitae's. And I would also suggest that my neighbors over here probably should request the same thing, especially if he's talking about. Lights from, uh, headlights off of, uh, you know, cars or things like that, that they should also be that same type of the boundary over there as well.
We don't have any objection to that, we, we're, we're fine with putting up some type of, uh, well, I, I think. Uh, attorney Consigli and I agree, it really should be arborvitae's. Uh, so we, we have no problem with the condition of our arborvitae's. For any of the lots that, that that appears to be a problem, the gentleman talked about, um, headlights. I, I, I have a very similar piece of property myself and I could put it. No, sir. Yes.
No, no.
No, he's your counsel.
He's the attorney.
I'm the attorney, yeah, but I live on Asylum Street, man. Well, I, I think what we're saying is that we're fine with an expectation and, uh, an order of conditions that. Arborvitae's are put up to meet the needs of the neighbors. Uh, you, you know, it's, I guess it's for you to figure out how that would be, but then Mr. Consigli said thirty feet minimum.
Yeah.
So.
I'm in the length of the law too.
So, so maybe we say fifty.
Obviously, there's a significant amount of big trees and other trees that do provide a lot of privacy and a lot of things thick in there. But I mean, I can only imagine that if you're gonna be building, you know, if you're building a septic system and putting a house there. Then all of this is gonna be clear cut, totally clear cut.
Yeah. How about, how about if we say, uh, the amount of arborvitae's needed to restore and provide the, um. Uh, the level of privacy, so instead of putting out thirty feet of whatever number.
As needed.
I'm sorry?
As needed.
There it is.
It's not, my fear is if you don't have something that specifically states what they have to comply with. Then it leads up to judgment and it leads to further problems.
So what, what is, what, what is the amount?
The problem is, I don't know how far back this is. So it's hard for me to judge, like exactly, I can only, like, I can. I can only look, I know you're probably gonna measure out the scale and everything else, so I can kind of figure out where it's gonna be, it's basically right next to my garage. I think, at least where I'm thinking.
Those houses are put on them in a general manner.
It's not here, thirty feet. And obviously they're gonna grow with the flow, but.
Those houses, um, are just placed there as, as an example. So I, I think probably what would be appropriate condition is that, that, uh, the part, that the gentleman agrees to. Place the houses as far as possible, uh, from, from the property line and, and provide vegetation.
Buddy?
We can always come back for a review too, to make sure we've complied.
So this, this is step one. You still have to go to the planning board after here, correct?
No.
No, for the eighty-one people.
Yeah, so.
And through conservation also.
Right, but the eighty-one P, and hold on, um. I, I don't, I, I, I want you to stay for a second, so. The eighty-one P plan is actually going to be more specific or is actually gonna have the actual, the locations, right?
Not necessarily, but if you condition it, then we can do a little more research, just through the chair, um. This variance plan has been put together more so for the frontage and the variance that's associated with the, the petition. The, the houses and septic systems are placed on there in a general manner and, you know, we can certainly. Through this process, we hear the concerns and then once we get further along. Because we're not gonna go out and design everything at this point, if this isn't gonna be.
I agree.
What's gonna be built, right, so we can certainly fine tune this, I can keep those houses. I mean, those houses right now are like sixty feet off the property line, this one be not lot one. That's showing like eighty feet off that property line right now, this is an eighty scale, so. Uh, there's definitely room there to accommodate the abutis, will definitely tighten up the design.
And no issues with providing vegetation barriers.
Correct.
Right, but I, but I. And again, I don't know the property enough, but I, I would. They do have some long driveways, right, from what I'm, I'm seeing here, right? I mean, if that's eighty feet, if that's eighty feet to there. Then the dri- the driveways you have proposed just seem to be very long and, and obvi- obviously the ones in the back are probably not as a concern. But maybe on the ones in the front where you're closer to folks. Keeping them as close to maybe the, the, the opposite side as far away from them as possible, because again, if that's eighty feet. And you go another eighty feet over, I mean, and, and then not disturb the natural, but it, a buffer that's already there. Then we're, you know, that's obviously, you don't even need arborvitae's or anything, if we can keep that natural, but, which is better than arborvitae's anyway. Well, I might think, I think that's a opinion, but I, I would definitely put in this decision. And I don't know how you word it, because you're right, we don't, you don't know at the moment what it is, but. You've gotta do, we've gotta put something. Um, or like you said, come back for a review. Once everything is found to be decent, the locations, to make sure that the neighbors are okay with this, because again. This is way better than a subdivision and I know, you know, you said it was, you know, a- a- anybody that comes and does a presentation is always gonna show that one first, right? Four is better than eight. Um, and, and. Oh, because now these. No, because that, now these would be. Yeah, 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 you would, you'd have to sell all the, they'd, you'd have to buy all the houses back, knock them all down to then put a subdivision. That's conservation, not here.
Can we get a name and address, please?
Can, can we, can you state your name and address? You have. Additional comment?
Uh, I have a couple of questions, yeah.
Okay.
So what I was told, I have about fifty feet off of my lot with wetlands. Has this wetlands been flagged, surveyed, gone through conservation, anything like that?
The wetlands have been flagged and surveyed and I don't believe that they've gone through conservation to lock them in.
Cause I haven't seen any flags.
Cause, cause we would do that, we would have to do that going forward for the design of those.
I, I just haven't seen that and I was told wet.
Well, so. You'd have to go through conservation before you took any additional action, correct? Yes, before anything's built, anything built within a hundred feet of wherever the wetlands are. According to those, uh, the green line, within a hundred feet, you have to go five.
And the other question is. With the presentation of eight building lots, instead of building right on top of. You had lots all over here, put them over here. And then nobody has a problem.
It, there is also a note on here that all those lot lines are not the subject that change as well, this is really. Trying to pin down the variance request for the, for the full lots and the variance for the frontage. So this is just step one. Excuse me? This is, this is just step one for the frontage. Yes.
This is the request to be able to buy the land, then we still have to go through all the processes. Which everyone has a right to come to, make sure that, uh, they will encompass to those that input. And I, you know, the gentleman, the owner, Mr. Clark, he, he wants to be a good neighbor, he's, he's not moving, he's living there, he's not looking to have a battle with him. Although willing to make sure that we've, uh, dealt with the, um, the sensitivities of, uh, the neighbors as best we can.
Right, I think that. No, no, I get it, and I think that that's what we're trying to just hash out right now is how do we, how do we, how do we make this so that it, it, it has. It's a little bit of the unknown right now, so right, it's, it's a hard, it's hard to say at the moment, but. I, I'm not saying it's not, and nobody, nobody's saying that it isn't. Um, and I, I think that, that, you know, that might need to be looked at a little bit. I, I, I never, I, I, I never told you that lot was non-buildable behind you? Oh, okay. Right, so you know, yeah, I, I mean, any, any. Right, yeah, I mean.
And he had a big trenches around him, boats and what have you, which is probably all. So that land was wet, he laughed and he said, first of all, I won't hurt. Half behind his mouth, I did chuck a next law because I thought of saying.
Well, again, again, buildable is different than what we're doing here, whether or not it can perk or not, that's, that's, that's another, that's border health. Uh, whether or not any of that's even doing, this could be, this could be a, 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 uh, you know, uh. Well, well, if, if.
Maybe then you have to go for site plan review among other things.
If, if perking was, if, not site plan review, but eighty-one piece, right, but the, the, the perking, you know, if, if perking's an issue, if that's what they're saying, then if it doesn't perk, then you can't put septic, you can't build house. Um, but again, the fact of, of subdividing it. Or. Yeah, es- es- essentially the frontage, right, essentially the frontage, but again, the way. The, the way that I, the, again, the way that I look at it is. Doing it the, this way is better than doing it through a subdivision. That's my only opinion. You only need thirty feet for a subdivision, cause you can blast the road in and then you sub- you subdivide, you're making a new road essentially, so you're, you're creating the frontage for those, those lots by, by. You have your eight lots, you have three's already there. And by then, and then the town accepts this road, now the town has to plow, the town has to.
Buy it.
To pave it, has to do all the clean the drainage, clean all of this, when you break it down to the four lots that.
It's better for the towns.
It's better, it's better. Like this, what's different, you still have a lot here and a lot here with the subdivision.
Oh, I understand, like a lesser two feet, it's really.
Yeah, it's, it's exactly what I was just.
I'm not saying that's a good thing, I'm just saying for screw to a loss, not really.
The, the only way that you, the, the problem with these things is, yes, it is, it, it's fair to say it's a lesser two levers. But I always try to tell clients. And I, I see attorney Lane sitting in the back and, and attorney Consigli, we would tell everyone, if you don't want anyone to build around you, you don't wanna ever worry about it, buy it.
Uh, once it's approved, I guess it's not really a lot one right now.
Then you could certainly put an offer in to buy it, if, if that, if that's where it goes, but I, I think his purpose, at least, uh, right now is, is for family. Uh, kids or grandchildren to be able to live in town.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Yeah, do you want, do you want us a question?
Yeah, uh, I just wanna know who owns the maintenance on the driveway.
So that would normally be something I would, or a lawyer would handle in the deed, uh, and.
On all four deeds?
I'm sorry?
On all four deeds?
Normally what would happen is, uh, and again, I haven't had this conversation with my client, but normally what we would do is likely. Unless you're going to create an association or a, or some other entity, uh, it would normally be the gentleman that owns the property. Uh, is responsible for the common driveway, and I use myself as an example. I did a similar thing and I am, on, on my deed, I am responsible for the maintenance of the, uh, common driveway.
I just see the, the common driveway is that dark line, right, so it's going through a multiple lot line, so no one person owns that, that way, so.
They all have it right away and.
Okay.
Unless you do an association or some other entity. Usually the party that owns the property initially is gonna, is gonna own it.
It would just be important to me that it's in the deed or something.
Yeah, well, that has to be, yeah, that certainly has to be addressed.
You don't want someone moving in there who doesn't have any idea who's gonna be.
Can we make that part of the conditions?
Yes, you can, that can be part of your condition, I mean. You know, my clients indicating that is our client, okay, that's fine with that, but yes, that is something you can put in the conditions. Owner, whatever, or the owner of such, such law shall be responsible for maintenance of the common driveway. That's what I have in my.
So, but, okay.
If I could, I'd like to just make it clear that the access drive that's sitting there now, the driveway now, is not, I'm not sure if the gentleman before had mentioned, well, when he had mentioned. That it's gonna be a road or something to that effect, that existing driveway, the way it is now.
Yeah.
Is pretty much gonna remain the same.
Exactly how it is, yes, yeah, I agree.
There may be some modifications that beef off some shoulders to make it a little more accessible, but it's pretty much safe, accessible at this point. There's even a detail submitted on it, but it's essentially, it's not gonna turn into a road, it's staying the way it is, I just wanna be.
Yep, but it's, it's an important observation.
You don't want someone moving in who's never moved there before and they don't know, and they didn't know that it wasn't a real road, they think it's a private road that, that they have. They don't know. Read your deed, read your deed. Yeah.
Well, yeah, I know, but that's, that, that's until whoever says. If they, Mr. Clark names out.
Whatever, it's, it's a deed, it's a note on his deed.
I know, but what's the level of maintenance? Yeah, I'll plow it once a year.
Right.
I'll, I'll, I'll do, I'll repay it when it's completely deteriorated, I, I don't, you know, there's.
That's why you make decisions on where you decide to live and where you don't wanna live.
Okay, so.
That decision.
So do we have any other comments from the audience?
Well, so.
Cause I would think you'd wanna address that first to make sure that it can't work before getting any kind of a variance to do something that may not happen.
So it's kind of a catch twenty-two, right? You, you, yeah, that's what I'm getting at, so there's, there's, if you go to conservation first, right, you spend all the money on conservation to find out that you can do it. And then find out you can't get the variance, well, you've already spent that money there, if you can get the variance and you can. And then find out you can't get the variance. Well, you've already spent that money there. If you can get the variance and you can't do anything with the lots, well, now there's just some lots you can't do anything with.
And you haven't spent a great deal. And you haven't set a great.
Precedents already been set. If there was setting, if, if we're talking about setting precedents. Based on what? No, no, I understand, but what, but where, where can we, where can we quantify that your house would drop forty grand if there's a house you can't see through?
Well, well, so. If, if. If you. But that's just, that's, that, that's speculation. If someone builds a really nice house back there, it could increase your value of your house by a hundred thousand dollars.
It always depends on who's buying the house.
We have any, um, other concerns that we have not yet been addressed? So otherwise, I'm. Thank you for your. Um, otherwise I'm going to see if the board has a motion on this one way or another. The variance as requested with the condition of the arborvitae or a condition that it's come brought back here for review once the location of the houses is finalized. I think the difference in this case is in, uh, uh, at least, I, I can speak.
Think what they think what we're trying to do here is because right now there's going to be, there's going to be some change in, in where these houses are located or possibly, and, and that's going to make a difference in.
So you know you can do what you want to do.
So this is.
Oh, and I did, and I looked at that. One oh two is what I want. But I couldn't do it anyway. So therefore, my idea was probably the same as.
You want, you want adding the, um, condition that Dylan suggested as well?
So what, what I'm getting at as far.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that entire. So what I'm getting at is the question that was at, that you asked about what we're doing with, with the, with the, uh, stipulations here. So what we're trying to do is have them come back here once they've got more done, like, again, we're granting, the motion is grant the variance with the stipulations. It's, it's very difficult for us to say right now, you need thirty feet of arborvitae or you, or you don't, right? So what we're saying is, once you have the plan laid out, where these houses are really going to go, come back here, gives everybody a chance to come back and talk about this so that we can, we can settle any concerns that are there for buffer.
To then come back with what this new player has planned, so we can understand exactly what we're granting. Able to redraft a plan that has accurate building sites and septic designs, so we understand what we're granting.
So a, a couple of things, the hardship is financial, which is in, in your.
There is no hardship here for financial.
The hardship for a client, financial hardship here is if he wants to have his children to, rather live in the town, put their school, kids in the school system. Land in Menon is very expensive. I think I heard someone earlier say, if you, if you got a lot for a hundred fifty thousand dollars, let me know, I'll buy it now.
So we have, we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, the second issue that Mike mentioned is to create septic designs and stuff. That's tens of thousands of dollars per test, septic designs, conservation, border health. So, look, look.
Yes, I, I agree.
Hold on, the, the, this, again, you, it's your meeting.
So I, I'm going to say right now, there is a motion on the floor, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Um, do you have any stipulations to add to the motion?
Uh, also stipulation on the driveway as well, but as mentioned by Dylan, the driveway is clear, the maintenance of the driveway is clear.
Okay. Do we have a second for that motion?
A second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, so because of the stipulations that have been laid down, um, when you have to come back for review, so you all have another chance to speak to this when it comes back in front of this board.
It's only four, so Dylan, it's it.
Just so that this does come back here, not that I, 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 I don't trust anybody. Make sure that the planning board knows and the building department knows if anything else comes in for this and it hasn't been approved from, come back here, that nothing can happen.
Yeah, you, you're, you're, uh, order will normally say stipulations have to be complied with.
Well, things get missed, that's all.
No, then you, you're absolutely right. And that, uh.
Luckily, it's me.
I know, right.
And all three, so. So I will stop any permits.
Thank you very much.
Do we want to set the next meeting date now? Sorry, I'm turning it over.
That'll be June twentieth is the next. Don't announce that.
Next meeting is June twentieth.
Yeah, we have three, three hearings already.
Yay.
Any other business or discussion?
No, I'm good. I'll make a motion to adjourn, or I'll second John's motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All right. All right.